Good evening and welcome to the August 12, 2013 Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you would please join me now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. First on the agenda this evening is Agenda Approval. And I'm sorry if you'll bear with me one moment. For those of you in the audience, we apologize. Normally, we have the agenda and all the documentation on the screens. Unfortunately, there was, I guess, an electricity strike over the weekend, or lightning strike, that has made these inoperable at the time. So, I apologize for that. There are agendas. If you don't have one in your hand, there are some sitting or floating around in some of the empty seats, please grab one. And we'll try to fill you in as best as we can if things are not presented that we need to make sure you're aware of. And with that, first item is Approval of the Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have one public hearing this evening. That is on Proposed Amendment to Chapter 151 Flood Damage Prevention, Section 151.26 Pacific Standards. And that's to add one foot above base flood elevation to the minimum residential building elevation. And this is to be consistent with the North Carolina Building Code. We did have a sign up sheet for the public hearing. And there is one individual that's, oh.
Sorry, I meant to put it on the.
Public comment.
Public comment. Okay, no problem. Okay. So, we did not have anyone sign up for the public hearing this evening. But if anyone is here that still would like to speak on this particular topic, you may do so. Is there anyone here that wants to speak specifically on this public hearing, or during this public hearing? Anyone that wants to speak on this item? Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing. And Greg, may I call on you, please?
If I miss a beat, or if you have extra questions, I will let our certified flood claim manager, Meredith Guns, answer these questions, because I'm sure she's quite capable. What we have before you tonight is, we're asking that you amend Chapter 151, which is our flood damage prevention ordinance, to make it consistent with the North Carolina Building Code. And that is that residential buildings since March of 2013 have been required to build one foot above the base flood elevation in the zone, in the flood zone district from which they're located. And this will make our ordinance consistent with the Building Code and also change our non-conversion agreement to match the Building Code. If there's any questions, again, Meredith Guns will be more than happy to answer those questions.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And this did go before the Planning Board on June 18.
Yes, it did.
See, Howard's here. And they were in support of moving this forward.
What is the one foot to modify the non-conversion agreement language? What does that mean?
Ms. Guns, I wouldn't want to deprive you of the opportunity.
The non-conversion agreement is an agreement that the owner would sign that says that they're aware that what they have is below base flood elevation. If we change the ordinance to be below base flood elevation plus one, we need to put the below base flood elevation plus one.
Yeah.
And so, we're just changing the non-conversion agreement to be consistent with the.
What does that mean? When does that apply?
Non-conversion agreement is an agreement they sign, that someone would sign if their building below base flood, or below base flood plus one, that says that they understand that that space can only be used for parking, storage, or dry entry.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
What we do with it is we go, we record it, register deeds.
Okay.
So, any future title searches will show that that space is limited to parking, storage, or dry entry.
Okay. So, a house burns 75 percent, and the owner wants to tear the whole thing down except for the pilings and the floor, and build it back up. He can't do it. He has to add another foot of elevation?
It'll have to be base flood plus one, or he can make his ground floors parking, storage, or dry entry.
Okay.
If it's below the base flood plus one.
Well, most of, virtually all of our older structures will be. I mean, for example, all of the cottages that, where's your house? Your house is at base flood elevation, isn't it, Howard?
Um, 18 inches. Where I park the car.
Yeah.
The base flood is 18 inches above that.
Above that. Okay. So, it wouldn't apply to you.
Yeah, that's why mine's just dry storage.
But there are some houses on Sportsman where it would.
Oh, yes.
They wouldn't be able to rebuild those houses. They would have to tear everything out and start from scratch.
Right.
Is that our intent?
Well, I guess my question, and how I've understood this, is this is bringing us in compliance with the North Carolina Building Code?
No, I understand that. Just wanted to make sure we understand what we're doing.
Right. Absolutely. Sure.
And it's my understanding that this is what they're going to be held to anyway. We're just, we're just bringing this into compliance. It really doesn't matter if, even if we don't do this, they're going to be held to this standard anyway. What we're actually allowing us to do is to allow us to do what you're talking about with the non-compliance.
Yeah, I think we need to be, I think we need to be clear on the ones that are all there right now.
Commissioner Pitt, if you read the amendment, substantial damage and substantial improvement are only held to the base flood elevation.
Okay. Okay. That's my question.
Yes.
Okay.
Substantial damage, substantial improvement are held to base flood elevation because the Building Code doesn't specifically address substantial damage or substantial improvement. It addresses new construction and additions.
Okay. So, the non-conversion does not apply to.
But if you're, if you're 18 inches below base flood elevation and you're damaged more than 50 percent, you still can't, you won't be able to put it back.
Right, right. You can't. I understand.
But if you're at base flood now, you're not going to be held to the plus one for substantial damage.
Okay. Understood that. Okay. That was my question.
Okay. Is everyone clear on that now?
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to look back to speak?
On this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Procedurally, then we can pause and reopen the public hearing to allow a comment on the specific item?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So, is that, okay, if you would approach the podium, please, and identify yourself by name and address.
My name's Al DeGita. I live at 1,000 Blue Day Street. My concern with this is that if you raise the base flood one foot, are we gonna put in our codes that you have to have a certain amount of water retentions on your lot instead of letting it pour out into our streets? Because we've had this issue before where if you raise the base flood a foot, they're just gonna put another foot of fill in their lot, and then the water's gonna run out into the streets, and then we got flooding. That's, that would be my major concern with that, because we've had a lot of issues with water coming out onto the streets that, you know, hey, I'm just gonna add another foot of fill, and I can build there.
Okay.
I mean, that's just an issue that I think we need to look at before we say okay to this. And we might need to revisit our codes and say, hey, look, you have to have a water retention plan in order to do that.
Okay.
Instead of letting water come out onto our streets and flood our streets, because we've had an issue with that, we already have an issue with that. If you raise your lot another foot, where's that water going? To somebody else's lot? To the streets? To where? I mean, that's just a new building. I mean, it might be a thing to look at.
Okay. Well, we'll address that.
But this doesn't affect grade elevation. This affects living level elevation.
Right.
So, this is not.
It should be a foot to get living underneath.
Not necessarily.
Right.
Well, we have to, we have to comply with state. Right?
I would just say that this is the flood damage prevention ordinance and doesn't necessarily have to deal with how people construct their lots to build. If there's a fill issue, that might be separate from the flood damage prevention ordinance. This is making our flood damage prevention ordinance consistent with the North Carolina Building Code as to the elevation that is required to build living space. And that would be base flood plus one for new construction. Not how they get there, but what they have to be to get to that living, to have living space. And this is.
So, the concerns that Mr. DeGita is raising, really, I understand why you're raising them, but it's really a separate issue related to when you're building in the water retention plan, not specific in this ordinance.
Because you could use, if you were below base flood, you could basically use no fill and still have storage, parking, or dry entry in that area if you wanted living space. This is a standard for building living space. It doesn't preclude having other use below that base flood elevation. So, it doesn't require someone to fill a foot. I would, you know, be with him if this required the fill, but it doesn't. It just dictates the type of use you can have.
Right. And example, Meredith gave me when we were talking earlier, she said, especially like if I was gonna build onto my house, per se, because I'm right at base flood right this moment, if I wanted to add onto my house right now, I could actually, if I wanted to add an office on, I could, I could use wood to build up a foot. So, that, that wouldn't necessarily be what you're talking about there. So, it's not necessarily fill that would be something that would be doing that. So, sometimes when you're talking about this, it's not necessarily fill.
And I guess at the, at the end of the day with this, it's really, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not a lot of debate that we have an opportunity for. Because if we don't do this, and we don't adopt this amendment, then we're just not consistent. Our language is not consistent with the state, but the state's gonna trump our language.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, this is just to get everything consistent on the books, but at the end of the day, it's really not a lot of flexibility that we would even have.
That's right. If somebody reads our ordinance, they would have the same impression as they read the Building Code. And when they're planning, they may not look at the Building Code, look at our ordinance, and make an error, and this helps make it consistent.
It's nice to have everybody clear on what it, exactly what it means, even though we have to comply no matter what.
Okay.
And just for clarifications, substantial damage 50 percent.
I was wrong with you.
Okay.
Before. I forgot we took the substantial damage out of the plus one.
Okay.
Because the Building Code did not require it. So, I was.
Awesome. That's even better.
It is.
Yeah, that was.
Or newer additions, new construction additions will be subject to plus one. As consistent with the North Carolina Building Code. As consistent with the North Carolina.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? Any questions? Is anyone inclined to make a motion?
I move that the, we adopt this proposed amendment as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll move into public comment. This is the opportunity where anyone can speak on any items, whether it's on the agenda or not this evening. We do ask, when you speak at public comment, if you're speaking as an individual, you limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you'll limit those comments to five minutes. And when I call you up, if you'll approach the podium and identify yourself by name and address, please. We did have a sign up sheet this evening for public comment. Mr. Craig Clark signed up to speak. After Mr. Clark speaks, then I'll call from the floor if there's anyone else. So, welcome, Mr. Clark.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thank you. Craig Clark, 528 Parkwood Drive. First, I want to say to Steve in Public Works, the job they did on Parkwood Drive with the repaving and with the drainage, it has done wonders. So, thank you. I was a skeptic of how they were gonna do it, and it worked out well. I read in the agenda tonight, under the mayor's agenda, about Section C on that with regard to using local funds to, to help supplement the state in taking care of the right of way. And I just wanted to say, because it said you may vote on it tonight, I haven't really researched it much, but I stand fundamentally opposed to using local funds to maintain a state right of way, where I think the state, it's their obligation, and at worst, they should get a letter from, from the board saying, hey, you know, it's affecting our town, and I think that the state should step up and have, and do more. I know that probably isn't a way to go, but, I mean, a way that anything will happen. But I just stand fundamentally opposed to that. I think the board has done a good job over several years in trying to maintain a small budget, not increase the budget, not increase our taxes. And I think this kinda goes against that thinking. And the only other issue is, I think around town, that that $1,400, if it, every two weeks, if it can be used, there's several streets in the local right of ways that could use trees cut on the overheads, or use some work that I think we should take care of, maybe what our own right of way problems are before we do this. I'm sorry, I'm sure the committee did a lot of work on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out and speaking this evening. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Lawrence Terry, and I live at 101 Pinehurst Avenue. And I biked over here this evening, and I dream of a beach community where all of us can, all the cyclists can, can bike around safely. Picture, if you will, a multimodal pathway along 158 whereby, you know, all families with, you know, scooters, or bicycles, or strollers could safely travel all the way from Kitty Hawk south to our neighbors in Naggs Head. If you're a motorist, I know you would appreciate having a separate, safe pathway for cyclists and pedestrians, so to have them out of harms way. Furthermore, the bypass merchants would benefit from increased foot traffic, because if you're walking or cycling, you have time to see the storefronts, which are usually passed by at 50 miles an hour. It would be a lot easier to shop from shop to shop versus the car travelers' obstacles of watching for access driveways, waiting for stoplights to change, pausing for oncoming traffic, turning and parking. The addition of a multimodal path along bypass 158 would make as big of an impact, I believe, to this community in enhancing safety, reducing traffic, and increasing revenues as light rail will do for Raleigh. My wife, Linda Terry, and I enjoy living at 101 Pinehurst Avenue on the corner of the bypass, and we very much embrace the idea of a boulevard, where the speed would be reduced to 45 miles per hour, exchanging the continuous central turn lane in favor of a dedicated left turns at stoplights, and where you could make U-turn safely. With a well landscaped median that captures the beauty of Kill Devil Hills, and an improved appearance that is inviting to those driving through, enticing them to a stop and shop and eat, thus increasing our tax revenues, I think the boulevard and a safe multimodal path will pay for itself over time with increased revenues. Lynn and I enjoy living in our 1950's vintage beach box, and if we get through the approvals process, we would love to hire local contractors to enhance and increase the value of our property right where we are, rather than moving north on the sandbar. We love KDH, but as part-time residents, my wife Linda's application to serve on the board was categorically denied. Our permanent residency is in the Commonwealth, just to the north of us, but we easily and desirably spend close to 50 percent of our time here in KDH. In essence, we are taxed without having the benefit of representation. We would like for the commissioners to consider allowing one or two non-resident property owners to be involved in civic service. There is an advantage in having an exchange of ideas and fresh viewpoints from property owner, vacationers, and resort property landlords. As an example, my wife sold more real estate here on the Outer Banks in 2011 than any other Realtor during one of the toughest markets in real estate. She holds a broker's license in both Virginia and North Carolina, and serves on many real estate boards, and is currently serving as president of Richmond Board of Realtors. In summary, I would like to encourage the installation of a safe, wide, multimodal path along both sides of 158 to encourage the support for transforming the 158 bypass that currently serves to bisect KDH from south to Beachside, and to an enhanced boulevard for vehicles, cyclists, and pedestrians. And lastly, for the Board of Commissioners to consider the inclusion of non-resident owners in a decision-making volunteer body. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening, excuse me, that would like to speak during this public comment? Yes, Mr. DeGita?
My name is Al DeGita, 1,000 Blue Day Street. And last night, I had a call, Dairy Central, about the pit again.
Well.
And I had to call them back at 2:30 in the morning and ask if anybody did respond, because the music never went down. I don't know if I need the officer to come to my house, so I can go over with them, to read his little decibel system or what, but, I mean, the music's loud. And, I mean, Sunday nights, I get to sleep from 3 o'clock in the morning until 6 o'clock in the morning, when the gym opens up, and they start their thumping. And I don't, I mean, I just don't understand why we can't do anything about the noise like that. I mean, I got three hours of sleep on Sunday night, basically. And then Thursday night, Pitt has, I think, I think it's Thursday night, they have the Yore Night again, that goes till 3 o'clock, and then the gym Friday morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, they start their thumping. I mean, I just, I don't know what we can do about it. And I hate to call and complain, because I don't, because, I mean, the police got more to do than listen to complaints, but, and I know cops drive by there and hear that music, and they could stop in there and say, hey, that is loud. But, I mean, I, I just don't know if you all have a solution for this, or what, but, I mean, the pit last night was loud as crap again, and it never went down. And they said that the police answered the call, they put the call out a minute after I called, and they said they answered the call, but it never went down. So, I mean, if I can hear from my house, I know it's louder than our decibel level. It has to be.
Okay.
But that's just a concern. I mean, maybe we can get some help.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak during this public comment time? Anyone else? Okay. We'll close public comment and move on to response to public comment. Mr. Clark, if you don't mind, we'll address yours when we get to the mayor's agenda. That way, it's open for discussion. I have not had the opportunity to discuss it at all with the board. I'm just bringing forth the recommendations, but I really do appreciate you coming and voicing your opinion. I really appreciate that. It's nice to hear, and to know that people are taking the, the time to read through the full agenda in the packet. So, thank you. Mr. Terry, thank you as well for coming, and a number of the things that you mentioned, if you guys don't mind, I'll just start, and then you fill in. But a number of the things that you mentioned, we are working on already with some of our DOT partners. You mentioned the 45, well, some of them we're working on, or some of them we have been denied. It's not all good news, but we did, you may recall, the speed limit was reduced last year, or earlier in the 2013 year to 45. We actually, when we asked for the speed limit to be reduced, we asked for it to be reduced townwide, but DOT was not supportive of doing that for really what, I'm not, I'd have to look up and find out the reasons, and we can do that to share with you. But we did make that recommendation. We have been still working with DOT, and they're putting together, they've been doing an assessment of the thoroughfares through the Outer Banks. And one of the things that did come up for discussion was transforming that middle lane into a landscaped median, instead of having that center turn lane. I know they had to get information from each of the municipalities about, about that. And if I can pause, I'm not sure where that stands. Are they still formulating their plan, Greg?
Yes. A draft plan should be coming out toward the end of this year, and that would be a comprehensive transportation plan, and it would also address your, your comments about cycling on 158. There's also a regional plan, a regional bicycle plan that's in its final phases. I'm not sure when that will be complete, but it does talk about cycling on 158 and all throughout the Almory region.
And we did adopt earlier in the year, a pedestrian and pathway plan as well, specifically for our town, looking, it's not funded, though, unfortunately. We don't have the funds there. But I will say, we've had some discussions recently about possibly planning a capital improvement workshop to start prioritizing all of the things that are on the wish list, like the sidewalks, and a number of other items, and trying to get the board to get their arms around what are gonna be our funding priorities, and in what order, and how do we figure out going after building that long-term plan to fund some of these initiatives? So, hopefully, we'll be hearing more about that as a board, but probably later this fall, we'll be looking at hosting a capital improvement workshop. Those are my thoughts on that.
We're gonna be talking about sidewalks in September here in the meetings. Is that correct? Now, our staff has just completed. Greg, if you want to talk about that?
Well, I can say that earlier in the spring, and throughout the colder months, there were several groups that came and spoke to the board, and the board responded by asking staff to work on a sidewalk plan with funding for 158. And I have, I hold here in my hand a spreadsheet, and it speaks to the, something in the order of 2.1 to 2.5 million dollars to take, to take that task on. And, you know, those are very rough figures, and in September, we might, we'll have them more refined, I hope. And then, it also, and that's looking at a five-foot wide sidewalk. So, there's, there's a section that you might want to, want to determine, because we have mostly five-foot wide sidewalks, four and five out there now, and then, then we gotta determine whether we want to go with a 10-foot wide multi-use trail, or, you know, which is gonna raise it up another, probably a third. So, we still have a lot of decisions to make, and this board is, is going to be involved with it after the staff gets through with it. And there's a map that's being done, too, and I think Public Services Director was, is working on that, and it's, it's pretty close to being done. So, we hope there'll be a lot more information for the board next month.
Thank you.
Yeah. You guys did a survey of all the sidewalks, how wide they are, how long they are, their condition, every, townwide, right? Okay. And that we'll be seeing that next month.
Yes, sir.
And then the other item you brought up about, I guess, non-year-round residents participating on boards and whatnot, I don't have a response to that, but I'm happy to discuss that with, with the board, and look into the history of where that's come from. Certainly, participation as a, as a commissioner or running for, for office, I mean, that's regulated by the state and requires that. But as far as the parameters are setting out, who's eligible and who's not for participating on boards and committees, I think we, we can have a discussion about that. I know.
I think we've had boards in the past that had non-resident property owners, haven't we, Bill? Do you recall?
I don't believe we have. My, my memory serves me that generally, we have not asked non-resident people to serve on the boards. We have had them serve on committees, but we have never had, as far as I know, a non-resident member of the planning board, or a, and certainly not a non-resident member of the, of the, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name there.
Well, I was, I was, yeah, I said boards, I meant.
Yeah.
There was people.
Committees, yes.
Committees and subcommittees, yes. They can't be on our VOC, and they can't be on the planning board, right?
And, and sometimes we appoint non-residents as committee members, particularly if we need a key area of expertise to examine, say, a sewage system, or a water system, or some techno, high-technology antenna systems, for example, or antenna towers, those kinds of issues, where we're not sure that we have the technical wherewithal within our own citizens to adequately come to a conclusion. But on boards, we have not, we have always used resident members, and that probably stems from the 80's, when a lot of non-resident developers would like to be on the planning board. Which is normal, you know, when, I'd like to change the Building Code, too.
I will say that the board has been dedicated to trying, though, to make sure that, that we are getting the information out beyond just our town, that people that can come to town meetings. So, over the past year, well, within the past eight years, sorry, you know, we started televising our meetings and recording them as well. They're now available, all of our meetings on YouTube, so if you have the internet to be able to stay involved, you can just Google Town of Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioner Meetings, and every single meeting since we started, literally almost two years ago, doing that. We also try to do highlights, where we just present, you know, the top, the top items that we cover in like a two-to-five-minute summary. Those are also available on YouTube. And certainly, we do want to hear from you. We don't want you to feel like you're, you're an outsider by any means, so we appreciate you coming tonight. And if you can't always be here, which I understand you can't, feel free to send emails or call, but we definitely do want to hear from you. Anything else? Next, Al was the, the third person that spoke at public comment. Is anyone from?
Gary's here.
Sorry. Sorry, you're hiding back there, Chief. Are you familiar, it's putting you on the spot, and if you're not, we can follow back up with Al, but are you familiar with any calls that went out last night relating to a noise complaint?
No, I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. You know, Al, we, we'll just need to look into that and find out more information about the calls, I mean, we did work pretty, we worked feverishly to try to get that noise ordinance in place, for this very reason, so if the calls were made...
Yeah, all three times.
Yeah, so we just need to find out what's...
It's Saturday night, I'm trying to get my own decimal reader, so I can go out there and measure myself, so that y'all can, I have an idea, because I don't know what it is, that it's loud.
Well, we will, Chief's here, so he's hearing this, he can follow up and look at what, what were the circumstances of the calls. I know you say you don't, you don't like to call, and I understand you don't like to call, but the only way we will know to respond and to try to enforce it is calling, and I do know...
They've got important things to do, that's...
Well, absolutely, but it's, it's, it's a concern, and, you know, we, I do know we talked about as far as...
So, I'm trying to figure out what's going to happen, I've got three hours of sleep.
Sure, I can, I know we talked about, when we put the ordinance in place, being able to go up onsite, do the decimal reading, of course, it's from the property line of, of the business, do the decimal reading, and ask them to lower it, so it, it is important to call back if it's not lowered, because then they'll know that their warning didn't work, and we would be forced to take stronger measures, so. Okay, anyone have anything to add?
No, I, I just want to make your stipulation about calling a, a little stronger there, because, again, a, a lot of things are complaint-driven, so I, I know you, you made the comment a couple of times, that the police officer can drive by there and hear that, but that's not always what they're thinking about, and if their window's up, and they're listening to the radio, the, the police radio, that's not always what they're hearing, so I, I just, I just encourage you, and, and anyone who has a complaint like that, to, to definitely not assume that someone else is making that call, that, that's the same thing when someone falls on the floor, don't assume someone else has called 911, so things are complaint-driven with that kind of thing, so always, always make that phone call.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to new business, please. Item number one under new business is to schedule a public hearing for proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, Section 153.082B2 exceptions. This is within the Ocean Impact Residential Zoning District to add accessory use structure setback exception for lots with a year, excuse me, with a rear yard abutting the Atlantic Ocean. This is to schedule the public hearing, Greg?
Yes, ma'am, this, this proposed change would mix in the oceanfront lots, because they interface with the Kama setback to create the rear yard, so it's a little different than, than all, most of our other zones, and, and what this would do is it would allow people to build an accessory use structure, which is quite popular on the oceanfront, to be west of the principal use structure, so these structures would be greater than six inches in height, and it, it actually has an opposite effect, if you, if you look at where our definitions are, are written, that it could make you move that accessory use structure away from the house and closer to the ocean in certain cases, so this actually seems to make more sense in terms of what people want to do, and adds a little more flexibility to our rules. So, the planning board recommended that this be, after I'm trying to see where, July 16th, and we recommend holding a public hearing, scheduling a public hearing for September night.
Great, thank you. Open the floor for questions, comments, discussion?
No, good.
Seems like a no-brainer to me.
Okay, does anyone like to make a motion to schedule the public hearing?
I move that we schedule a public hearing for, is it September 9th? Is that, September 9th at 5:30 PM, to, to consider and discuss this proposal.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please stick no by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The second item under new business this evening is a report on the minimum housing standards in abandoned houses, and this is in response to issues that were brought up during public comment on our, at our July 8th meeting, and we had to ask staff, in conclusion of that, to start looking into minimal has, minimum housing standards in abandoned houses. So, is that Greg that's going to give us this overview?
Well, I'd certainly be happy to do that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
The town manager has provided a, a really good synopsis and summary of what the housing standards and powers of the local government can be, and it basically breaks it into two sections, and one, it speaks about the building inspector, and how the building inspector is responsible for construction of buildings, and he also has the responsibility, some other responsibilities that can be delegated, and the building code actually asks him to be responsible for condemnation of structure that are especially dangerous, and that's important, because if you speak to Steve about that, the town attorney will tell you that, that's not every building that hasn't cut the grass, it's not ones that have the, you know, maybe some paint problems, but it's the ones that have overloaded floors, or defective construction, maybe they've deteriorated to, to the point of where the roofs cave again, or, you know, the house is leaning and listing, something structurally has a problem, and, and adequate regress is also another way that, that they can be condemned. Minimum housing codes, however, can declare a structure hostile to the public health, safety, and welfare, and this can be because it fails to fully comply with the standards of a, a locally adopted code, and what has happened in the past is that Killable Hills has historically seen the free market take care of most of these houses, you know, you have a, a, a period of, of growth that would, that takes care of it, essentially, if you one old house on two lots, and somebody will tear down that old house and build two new houses, or, or maybe you'd have an older structure, that somebody would see an opportunity, and one of the ones that, that's brought on this discussion tonight, I believe, that the code enforcement officer is meeting with a prospective buyer tomorrow, whether or not that happens or not, but to fix that house up and bring it into compliance, but generally, that's happened over the years, and, and now, I guess, the board has to make a decision whether they want to allow that to happen, maybe, I think the manager says possibly take a look at our nuisance control, and, and maybe beef that up, or somehow address some more, some of the other circumstances that have become egregious, or whether you want to look at, for a minimum housing code, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I do know there's staffing issues, and, and if you look through the, the list that, that is attached in her memorandum, and starts talking about the standards, and, you know, there's a table there, there's a couple of pages that, that really talk about some of the standards, and some of them sound really pretty easy, and everybody would, would agree with, but there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of work that would be done, and if somebody complains, again, about somebody's house, and you need to go in and check off, do this checklist, I dare say there's a lot of homes that won't, that won't meet it. Oh, yeah, and, and Mayor, this reminded me that it is, it is a universal code, that would apply to everybody, the very nice houses to the, the very, the ones that, that are not very well maintained at all.
Sure. Hey, thank you. Debbie, thank you for putting the information together, this is definitely, unfortunately, we couldn't put it up here this evening, but if anyone does not have a copy and wants a copy, it's on the website, but it's really great information on explaining the difference, or not really just the difference, but all of the details involved, if you are looking at minimal housing standards, minimum housing standards.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, but I, I do have to say that that was definitely a team effort, the town clerk and the planning department did a very good job.
Thank you all very much, yes, great information. Open the floor for questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to mention a couple of things. On the second page there, in the, the first full paragraph at the beginning, it says, "Non-residential buildings or structures that appear to be vacant or abandoned, and appear to the building inspector to be in such dilapidated condition as to cause or contribute to blight, disease, vagrancy, fire, or safety hazard, to be a danger to children, or to tend to attract persons intent on criminal activities or other activities that would constitute a public nuisance, may also be declared unsafe." So it sounds like we have a lot of latitude there, I don't know if that's right or not, maybe we don't, but, and it goes on further, further down the page. "A dwelling unit that does not meet the classification as, in quotes, unfit for human habitation," unquote, "but fails to fully comply with the standards for housing fitness established by minimum housing code," which is what we would establish, I believe that we could do that, "may be declared hostile to the public health, safety, and general welfare because of conditions that could lead to deterioration and dilapidation of the dwelling, thereby making them unfit for human habitation." So, the way I'm reading that, it seems to me like we have some, we have some latitude in making up some minimum housing standards, and I know that there's a lot of stuff we have to clear through our attorney and such, but just anecdotally, trying to remember the problems that we've had around town, and looking around, it seems like there's properties out there that would easily fit into one of these scenarios, in which case they could be, you know, the, the process to get them remedied, remediated, would be easier, maybe quicker, to get done than we have with some in the past. I don't know, again, that's the way I'm reading it, but you guys know better than I do. And lastly, it said, "Governing boards must keep in mind not only hard facts, such as potential decline in property values, but also such imprecise conditions as neighborhood contentment and individual preferences." Neighborhood contentment is the key word, because a lot of people live near these properties and are not content because of them, so. Greg's right about redevelopment, generally takes care of a lot of this stuff, things have slowed down a bit, and redevelopment, I think, maybe in certain areas of the town is going to take quite a long time, decades perhaps. You know, five, six years ago, people were buying up lots and tearing old buildings like that down, and building something nicer, but that slowed a lot, so. Anyway, that's what I have. Did I, is that, Greg, do you think that's, I was right in my assumption that gives us some latitude?
Well, the first part you read really dealt with non-residential structures, and there's more latitude with that, and, and then, of, of course, the, the decision here is, is do you want to mend your nuisance ordinance, and, and possibly put some more teeth in that to, to look at these structures that, that you, you consider a problem, or do you want to take the other step and, and make somebody have to paint their house, because that can lead to a condition where it can decay, they don't have paint on it, and, yeah, screens, paint, you know, the number of issues, you know, it's just about anything, and there, there are just more levels of, of enforcement, and, and a stricter, you're wielding the sword in a very strict way if you go into the minimum housing business.
I was at a meeting several weeks ago, an elder abuse collaborative, and we actually discussed this exact topic, and we had the county building inspector there, and, and talked quite a bit about this, and it's, it's not a unique problem to Killable Hills, it's, it's a, it's a county-wide problem, I'm sure it's a statewide problem, and we discussed at length what, what we can do, we, the, the collaborative is, is co-founded, it's, it's sponsored through Department of Social Services, so they, they have an intent need and desire to fill the needs of their, their clients, who, who, some of which are living in these houses, and, and trying to make them safe, and, and make the folks around them happy, is, is, is a universal topic, but, safe and happy for the client is not, not the same thing. So, again, we, we could talk about this all day long, and, and basically, what it boiled down to was, you, you've just got to be willing to make the rules and stick to them, and, when, when we were told, what you're going to have to do is exactly what you just said, you're, you're going to have to put some teeth into your, into your rules, and, and then you're going to have to have a, a board that's willing to back it, and, and, and are you willing to take the flak for what, what you're, what you're voting on, because everything, everything you do has repercussions, especially the, the, the non-commercial buildings, when, when you're talking about somebody's house, it's not just a building, it's where they live, it's their home. So, through that, a hoarding task force was formed, which probably was just a small part of the problem, but that probably leads to a big part of what happens, so for anybody interested in that, give me a call, I'll be glad to set you up with the person in charge of that at Social Services. But, you know, again, I, I think it's a, it's a problem, it's something we can discuss, but I, I, I think, I, I can tell you from sitting on this board and listening to what they discussed there, the, the, the person from the county was much more standoffish than what we've done here, the, the, Killable Hills has been much more proactive than, than other areas.
Mr. Pitt, any comments?
Yeah, I, I think we want to be very careful on tippy toes about minimum housing standards. I live, I own a home in a community that has minimum housing standards, and inspectors routinely come through and tell the house owners that their roofs have to be cleaned, their, their sidewalks have to be cleaned, their driveways have to be cleaned, their lawns are not mowed to standard, so forth and so on, and, and the, and the debates and the meetings on what should be a new standard, and, because anybody who has a complaint is going to come and ask for a new standard that prohibits, if there's, somebody's parking four cars in the driveway and one car in the yard, they want a standard that says only four cars, or, or only two people per bedroom, or, or some such, and, and you get into infinite variations of what people want, and the amount of time that it takes to deal with all of these, because they all have to be dealt with equitably. If we want to get involved in that, it gets very detailed, and it's very time-consuming, and it involves a lot of legal work. I'd also suggest we think back to why our community is the way it is, and how we got to where we are. You know, only, only half of our, what do we have, 7,500 lots, 6,500 residences, maybe another 500 businesses, but only half of those residences are actually occupied year Yes, we want them taken care of, but, but, and those who get high rents for them do take care of them, because that's part of getting a high rent, but we also have a significant number, several hundred, that are in poor condition, and the owners intend to, they use, treat them as cash cows, and they intend to get as much cash out and put as little in as they possibly can. But generally, they clean them up every spring, because they want to rent them for the summer. But if we start tightening up these regulations, and it may well be our collective decision that that's what we want to do, but if we start doing that, we're changing the nature of our community, and sort of changing the path from whence we came, and taking off in a new direction, and I don't see anything wrong with that, as long as we understand what we do, what we're doing, and where we're going, but we shouldn't just do it willy-nilly in response to a few complaints, if you get my meaning, we need to think, think it through. So, I would be just careful about it, that's all, I, I wouldn't charge off on, on something of this sort.
Well, I appreciate all of your comments, and I, if you'll note in your package here from the town manager, the staff's recommendation was to look at Chapter 93, and possibly consider an amendment to that town code, to add a little more meat to the regulation on blight and abandon and vacant unsightly structures, which may give the staff a little more support in enforcing kind of what we are running into with what was brought to us on July 8th. Also, if you'll note, we have not looked at, or there have not been any modifications to Chapter 93 since 1994, so we're going on nearly 20 years, so I think that was a great recommendation that staff put through, where at least we are stepping, you know, into this to explore it a little deeper before, as you indicated, looking into the, the great abyss of the minimum housing standards.
But, what, if we were to take a look at our nuisance standard, our nuisance ordinance, for example, and see if we can improve that to cover at least some of the concern... and see if we can improve that to cover at least some of the concerns that have been expressed in the past, what would be the areas that we would look at? I mean, obviously abandonment and general deterioration is one concern. Uh, is that something that can be handled in nuisance ordinance?
I think so.
Okay. What are some of the others? I mean, I can think of some in my own neighborhood, but, uh, but what are, what are some of the others? That, that have been brought up that we think need to be looked at?
I've looked at a couple of, I've looked at a couple of towns. I specifically asked North Carolina planners if there was any ordinances they had out there outside of a minimum housing code that dealt with nuisance structures, abandoned or nuisance structures. And I have some examples of those that I, you know, would probably want to spend some time with the attorney in looking at that dealt with how long a window could be boarded before it became a nuisance. And, um, things of, of that nature that dealt with some of the visual, um, problems, not necessarily the building code. Because like we've said in the, in the report, the building code limits you to, it's got to be falling down. There's got to be a structural defect. But the minimum housing code takes you to, he has a ripped screen. You need to go out there and do something about that. And so, um, there are towns in, in North Carolina that are using their nuisance ordinance to try to deal with some blight and not go the minimum housing. But, you know, it would take a lot of work with the attorney to make sure that we weren't stepping over that line.
Okay. How about land use? Can you use the nuisance ordinance to, uh, improve or strengthen land use regulations?
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by land use. Like whether they're residential or commercial?
Right, right.
Not in the nuisance.
Not in the nuisance ordinance, okay.
But that's, does that mean?
Zoning can, zoning can do that, but...
Well, zoning does do that.
Yes, but the nuisance ordinance doesn't regulate the land use. It's not in the land use section of our code. Steve, stop me if I'm stepping off a cliff. Okay. But there are some examples out there that, you know, that do use their nuisance ordinance to address some of the, um, visual defects outside of...
So it's primarily used to regulate buildings and structures and not, not, uh, not anything else?
Well, the nuisance can be, you know, accumulations of, of grass and weeds and vegetable matter, you know, construction debris. But I, I'm not sure that's what the board is principally targeting based on the last meeting. I think you were looking at more of the structures that were abandoned or, and just being neglected more, more than anything else, not even ones that people were living in, if I'm not mistaken. I, I'm, I'm just judging from the minutes.
Well, how would we go about taking a look then at strengthening our nuisance code in the area of buildings and structures? How, how would we?
We would come back to the board with the recommended, those recommended changes based on some of the information that Meredith, um, has gotten. And then, of course, we would also do some more research on that. But we'd simply bring you back something at the next meeting.
You could.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we encourage that to happen.
I think that's great. Do we need a motion or are we just?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I think that's what's right.
I'm sorry. Mayor, you said that you've looked at other towns and such, and so you're going to, you're saying you're going to look at those. Let Steve look at them, see if they would work for us, staying within the law. And then you could show us examples, right?
You never know if every town does it exactly by the book.
Yeah.
Before I put it on our books.
Each town has its own book, huh?
Thanks.
Well, great. Okay. Thank you.
The one thing I'd like to say is that when we do this, that we do make sure that we have the latitude to just make sure that when we are dealing with structures that are occupied, that we, we have the ability to look at what's going on there. Because that's the one thing we talked about at this meeting, was the fact that it's, it's one thing to go ahead and, you know, rip the meter out of a house. But when you're talking about somebody's home and where they're living, it's, it's, it's really hard to make that decision. And when, when you put that in writing and that's what you're doing, and, and when, when you make that the rule and it's, you know, I'm, I'm all for the rules. If the rule applies to you, it applies to you and you and me and you and you. We just need to make sure that, that, that we're, we're being cognizant of the fact that there are people living in these homes. Some of them. I mean, primarily, we're, we're talking about abandoned structures here. But the, the ones we were talking about in the meeting I was in were the homes people were living in. And they were just as bad or worse than some of the ones we're talking about here.
The commissioner's right. The, um, we have structures in our town and, and other towns that really ought to be torn down. We have families living in structures paying three hundred and four hundred dollars a month, electrical bills. Because they're in such terrible condition.
Well, we have experience working through the process, just within the last year of, of this too. Well, credit it. I guess finally, um, had some closure within the last year. Been working on it for years. But, so, it's a process because you do. You have to keep all of that in mind with those decisions. They're not taken lightly.
That's the most frustrating thing. It takes years.
Absolutely.
I know a lot of it's legal. We have notification times and such. So I'm sure a lot of that time is dictated by law, but it does, it just takes so long.
Well, we look forward to what staff can bring back at the next meeting. So, thank you. Okay. We'll move on to the commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Pitt.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to suggest that, uh, I believe tomorrow we will have our financial consultant, consultancy aboard and, uh, available. Is that right?
Depending on the approval of the consent agenda this evening, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, I'd like to suggest that at our next meeting, uh, we ask the finance and planning, uh, to put together, uh, several options for the commissioners to consider in establishing the special service districts that would need to be considered to proceed with beach nourishment. And, uh, what I'd like to suggest is, is that two, three, four different options be assembled and placed, uh, in our packets next week, or next, next meeting next month in September. And that we set aside twenty, thirty, forty minutes to go through those options and select one if we can at that meeting. And ask them to formally put, put that together so that we can have a public meeting, a public hearing in October or in November, but preferably in October, and then adopt it. Uh, establish that service district, or service districts if it's more than one, um, in either the October or November meeting. But, uh, that, that would basically, uh, get that established. We wouldn't be setting a tax rate or, or an amount or anything. Now, we certainly will have to discuss those as to what they, they might be. But we're not actually going to be establishing a, uh, a, a, a tax rate for those districts. But, uh, establish them so that people know that they're either in it or they're not in it and that sort of thing.
Do we have any indication, I know we need to get through the consent agenda. Do we have any indication from the consultant if they can be ready for the September ninth meeting?
Well, I think what Commissioner Pitt's asking, asking is that we, um, bring you options of an actual district. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And, um, Beverly and I have had some discussions about this. And she's also, um, has spoken with, um, the NAGS Head Finance Director and how they establish theirs. Obviously, um, the advi- advisors that we would, or we're going to be using are the ones that, um, NAGS Head used also. So with all that being said, I, I feel that that is something that we can accomplish. As to whether or not they can actually be here, that I, I can't address. But, um, but I, I believe we can bring you back something that, that the board can be comfortable enough to, um, set a public hearing.
Okay. And one thing, if you don't mind, if I would add to the information that you've already spelled out that you would like to see presented at that meeting. Beverly's done multiple calculations when we discussed this back about the, the possible scenarios and what that would mean if you owned a X dollar house. Or, um, I think as much of that as we can include with that information as well, even pulling some of those things out.
To give examples?
Right. That just really helps get it in front of people to understand what that means to them and to, you know.
And that, that actually would be a little grayer because as Commissioner Pitt said, you know, you wouldn't actually be setting a rate.
Right.
But, but you would have, you would have a good, a good idea as to what that rate would need to be in the, in the, um, special district. And then what that rate would need to be town-wide.
So hypothetically, if we think we're within that ballpark, if we have some scenarios, okay, that would be great. Is everyone okay with having that on the September ninth agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Pitt? Anything else? Okay. Mr. Rupert?
I just want to thank Debbie and everyone who was a part of the National Night Out. Was it last week?
Last week.
At the time, it's, time's, time's flying by. I think it was extremely well attended, especially considering the weather. We ordered better weather, but it just didn't happen. So, um, Chief Tilly, Chief Brett, uh, your, your departments were very well represented. And, um, I, I think everyone who was there had a really good time. I've had several people thank me for that. So, um, I couldn't take any credit at all, except for just showing up. But, um, it was, it was a great event. It was a great family event, which was really, really good. So I just want to thank the town for that.
Yeah, it was, uh, I was there too for, for a little while, excuse me, and, uh, it was very well done. It was cloudy. It didn't rain. And it was a little bit cool, but that was good for a change. I know Jerry Froelich's here tonight. He's, he was working with the auxiliary and they were serving free hot dogs and stuff. And, and, uh, he told me that they had brought three hundred hot dogs and they ran out and they had to go get two hundred more. So it was very well attended. So it was, and they did a great job in supplying the food and drink for everybody. It was a lot of fun. Thank you, everybody who was involved.
That's a great event. Do you want to continue on with, uh, anything under your agenda this evening?
Oh, yeah. I got, I wanted to mention, uh, the, uh, video that was produced by the Police Department, John Tyler, about the cold case. I don't know if any of you have seen that. Was that on at all, John, or was it? Was it on, I'm sorry, was that, uh, video on at all where people could have seen it in the past or was it take? It wasn't.
It was on the website for a while.
Right. There's a, there's a system by which the, that they detect copyright infringements. And so they took that off because A and E has a program called Cold Case Files or something like that. So they took our video off because they thought it conflicted. And John talked, actually talked to a person at, at the, um, what did I say? A and E channel? Uh, actually talked to a person, got it straightened out. So it's back up on, on the website and you can watch it. I started watching a little bit of it today and I didn't get a chance to finish. But it's really professional. You could actually show it on TV. It's really cool. It's about a case dating back to ninety-seven, I believe, a murder that happened here in town and is still unsolved. And it's, uh, about twenty-five minutes long. It'll, it'll keep your attention. So I might, uh, want to suggest that you go on the website and take a look at that. And, uh, kudos to John and all the others who were involved in putting that together. Very, very well done. Thank you, John. I think that's all I have for now. I have some other things. I want to put together a little bit more information, bring them up at, uh, maybe one of the other meetings where we don't have as much stuff to discuss, so we can fill in some time and earn our keep here.
I think September's shaping up to be a pretty big meeting.
Might put it off to October.
So, okay. All right. We'll move into the mayor's agenda. I too wanted to comment on the success of the family night out and thank staff. Certainly my boys had a blast. They really enjoyed themselves, so. But it was really wonderful to see all the, the people out at the event. When you, you spoke of, um, videos that Sergeant Tyler has produced. I'm not sure if it's airing anywhere now, but, um, it is, okay. I attended a, um, kick, a community kickoff meeting that Saga hosted, um, related to trying to raise the money for the defibrillators, for the police cars. And they were basically inviting people, inviting other businesses to help them raise the funds, which they actually have raised enough money to put defibrillators in all of the KDH vehicles. They presented the check for that, um, at the family night out. So local businesses, Saga has the name of those, but tremendous support through the community. At this breakfast, they, they aired a video, which was basically the true accounts of, um, Captain Evans' response when, um, the gentleman suffered the heart attack. And anyway, if, if you don't understand what a defibrillator does and how it's such a life-saving, um, device, watching that five to seven minute video will just, it's immediately, it's kind of sends, chills up your spine and, and just, you know, certainly, um, the gentleman is, is here today because of the efforts of, of Captain Evans and having that equipment at his disposal. So we're excited about that. So thank you, John, for that video as well. And I'm guessing you could access it through YouTube and also on the town's website. Okay, with that, um, in the packet this evening, there is a, a pretty sizable mayor's packet, mayor's agenda as well. And basically what this is, um, is information that I'm bringing to you from the Community Appearance Commission. If you'll recall, we established that commission last year and they began meeting monthly back in January of this year. And they have worked quite hard on trying to look at what things we can do to enhance the, um, basically, the, enhance our town from a, an aesthetics point of view. They've invited, um, people from NC Dominion Power here. They've also had DOT come and presented their meetings. And so what's in this packet this evening is, or what's, what's in the packet this evening are recommendations from this, um, Community Appearance Commission on ideas that they have explored and evaluated to try to enhance the town. It's a lot of information to digest. I wasn't necessarily thinking that we would look to take action this evening on each item. I was more trying to put it in front of you and ask you to start looking through it. And then if it is something that you think is, that you have an interest as a board in pursuing, we can provide direction to staff to give us inform, more information if it's needed, or schedule any of these items to be an agenda item. Now, the first item was to request NC Dominion Power to investigate relocating the streetlights located along US one fifty-eight from the wooden poles to the big poles. And so the premise behind that is you, you know, when you hit KDH, because we have poles lined on both sides of the street or sides of the street more than anyone else. And pretty much what was going to come down when they put the big poles in has come down. There are no more that are scheduled to, to come down. So in looking at unless, which that's going to be the third thing we talk about, but unless you're going to underground the lines, which is a big, big process and, and, um, then maybe some of the way to start removing some of the poles is to take the lights that are on wooden poles and move them over to the big concrete poles. So this request right now is basically when, when the representative from Dominion Power came and met with the Community Appearance Commission members, they said it's something that can be done. But basically, they would need direction to try to look at, seeing if they could provide what the cost to study it and, and to do it would be. So that's one of the items from the Community Appearance Commission is, um, would the commissioners, um, be willing to request NC Dominion Power to do that? And that really rolls into the second thing when we're talking about the light poles, which was the only other way to start removing more of those. So we have, uh, you know, kind of a better corridor down there, would be to underground some of the lines that, that would not ever remove the big poles. It would remove all those wooden transmission poles.
Distribution.
Distribution poles, sorry. It doesn't remove the transmission, which are the big ones. It removes the distribution. And to do that, there is a way to establish a special utility district, um, that you have to get the board and, of commissioners involved in that. It's, it's detailed in here. It's rather complicated. So again, I'm not looking for action tonight by any means. I would like you guys to process and think about it and see if it is something that you want to pursue. And then, um, item number, or item letter C, which is what Mr. Clark was speaking about. We did have NC DOT come and meet with the commission to talk about their role in helping keep the, the grass cut and so on and so forth. And basically, the state budget only allows, or only provides funding for the, to cut every five to seven weeks. And what happens is they start in NAGS Head and they cut from, or they start at the beginning of the county and they cut all the way down through Currituck County, and then they come back. And, you know, depending on the weather, that can, that loop can take five weeks. Or if it's bad weather and they have days off, it takes seven weeks. And, yeah, it's approximately five to seven weeks. So basically, um, the committee thought that when the grass grows really high, that it's unsightly and, and that it's, it's, you know, not a great look in our town. And so they asked, um, our Public Works Department to look at, you know, can we supplement that and what would the cost be? And, and those were provided in here as far as what the cost is. And the cost includes not only, well, one other thing that the committee did, they did ask NC DO- And the cost includes not only, one other thing that the committee did, they did ask NC DOT when they came if they could give us a heads up of when they might be cutting in Killable Hills because possibly we could work with the Surf Rider Foundation or we're also exploring adopt a highway, you know, trying to, maybe so we could have a structure to pick up the trash. So it's not just shredded and blown everywhere. Anyway, they did give us a call last time, but I think it was a day before they cut and there's no way to pick up all the trash. So the, the proposal that's in here for the supplemental mowing includes debris pickup prior to cutting as well as cutting. And then the last thing is more of just an FYI. Item number D is letting you know that they are working with the Surf Rider Foundation. We've met with them to talk about kind of collaborating where possible, not only on the beach suite, but other cleanup efforts. So that was a very positive meeting. We're going to try to help promote getting, making sure that people who are signed up to do the adopt a beach are engaged and then also looking at possibly recognizing them formally, maybe even at our meetings as a way to help incentivize them to keep cleaning. Okay, I'm going to pause for a moment and open the floor for comments, discussion, thoughts?
I have some thoughts on the mowing thing. Anybody want to comment on that in order or?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, on the first one, the community, the, let me see what it was about here. About moving the lights, I was at the meeting where that was discussed. And is it my understanding that if we ask them to do that and you have a study, that we would get charged for that study or not? Yes, we would, right? Is that right?
I honestly don't know.
Yeah, it's to provide cost of the study and an estimate cost.
That's what I understood through Mr. Thompson.
Okay, yeah.
There would be a cost for the study or?
That's right. There'd be an engineering study to look at, to analyze all the existing structure and try to do a photometric plan to bring it back similar to what it is. Whatever it would take to create that study.
To do for the lights.
Exactly. And then there'd be a cost to do it.
And then taking a cost system and actually do it.
To implement the study.
Right.
Right.
That's what I understood.
In that, in that discussion with Michael Thompson, was there any discussion as to whether or not DOT would have input? Because it is DOT's right of way. We've had, we had a lot of coordination with DOT when the lights were put in.
I would assume that there would be, but there was no discussion.
Do we have an existing photometric study or plan?
I don't think I have a copy of that. That's on, what, late days?
All I remember was that the poles were put too close to the highway and had to be relocated further back. It was, seemed like an ever-boying saga.
But I, I don't recall there being a photometric survey. I believe the poles were just established so many.
I think if there had been, they wouldn't have been put too close.
I would, I would expect today that there would be a little more sophisticated.
That's the problem. No, it is because you'll have a photometric, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
All right, go ahead.
If you have a photometric study, you start moving on the east side of the highway so you can match up to the poles, that's going to leave photometric vacancies. So they're going to find out, you're going to have to also shift wooden poles from where they are on the west side to a different spot. In other words, because you're moving lights on the east side, you'll also have to move some of the lights on the west side. And see, those lights will still be on poles. Remember, we have equal number of lights, both sides, all on wooden poles.
It was my understanding that, that it could be, you could have a light on the big metal poles and it would be such that it would light enough of the highway that you wouldn't need it lit from the other side. It would be.
That may be.
Yeah.
But you'll need a study to find out. And you may find out that there are several instances where it doesn't work.
Sure. So really, we don't know much about it right now.
No, because the, the distance between the metal poles is different than the distance between the lights.
Right. The other thing, as far as the mowing, this subject has been talked about on many occasions, going back over the years. And there's been differences of opinion, obviously, about whether we should do it or not. And there's some, I recall some discussions with, that were going on with the Board of Commissioners or in the planning, planning board, that one of the feelings is, well, why should we pay to do that when it's the state's responsibility? Well, the response to that was because it looks like heck and we want to get it cleaned up. And the state's not going to do it the way that we want it done and to have it looking the way we'd like to have it look. They do five passes between April and December and they've only done two right now so far this year. And so by the time they finish the other three, we're going to be out of the season. Which is, this is the time when we'd like, we'd like to have all five in the summer. Well, maybe not, but you know what I'm saying? So I would actually consider us contracting to have some of this done. And I, you know, you always say, well, it's not a lot of money. I mean, it all adds up. Don't get me wrong, but the question is, do we want it to look like it is? Or do we want to pay to get it done? Because otherwise, it's going to look like it is. So, but I'm in favor of getting it done myself by the contractor that gave us the bid.
Mr. Diaz, the County Board of Commissioners has considered the, creating a utility district before and took no action, as I recall. Do you recall the details of that? Why they balked or why they avoided the? I don't.
I don't recall right off. There've been set, there were several issues or concerns and some of them are listed as bullets in the mayor's memo. But it's my understanding that the county would create the district and then the town would request to be a part of that or to be included in that, in that district.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just never, it's never gotten that, gotten that far.
Mm-hmm.
But no, sir, I don't, I don't recall specifically why it wasn't.
Okay.
I can, I'm going to be in a meeting tomorrow with the county manager and would certainly be willing to ask him.
Could you ask Mr. Hilton if he recalls or has somebody on his staff who recalls and?
I will.
Perhaps bring that back to us because it seems to me there was some difficulty when it was, it was originally proposed. I remember when the, when the statute was originally provided.
Right. Well, there was, like I said, there was a number of factors. In fact, one in particular, the, as you see, the last bullet in the mayor's memo says, talks about the increased operation and maintenance costs that you would, you have the dollar per month residential and up to five per month for businesses. So obviously, it's going to take a long, long time to, to get the money. And there was some discussion, well, where, where would the county start with the money? And if each of the municipalities didn't ask to be in the district, you know, how would that work?
Yeah.
But yes, sir, I'll bring that up tomorrow in discussion.
All right. What I'm wondering about is, what I'm afraid of is, is that the only way they can establish this is to, they have to basically assess these fees against every bill in the county. But I'm not at all sure if that's correct.
It is if they have, it is if the district is set up.
Mm-hmm. At any rate, I know there's some sort of problem and there was quite a bit of discussion about it, but I, I don't know whether it's because I'm getting old or whatever, but I don't remember all the details of it. I'd like to suggest that we consider, when we look at A and B, that we consider combining those two into, it's really part of the same issue. And the reason I suggest we consider combining is because the only poles that really could be removed are on the east side of the highway, which also happens to be where the main clutter of the distribution system is. And so removing those poles for the lights isn't going to make very much difference at all. It would make quite a bit of difference if you undergrounded the distribution and you didn't change the lights. So I think if you, if you ever figured out how to get the distribution underground, you definitely want the lights put up on the steel poles. And then we probably would want steel poles on the other side for the, for the western lights. But anyway, I think that A and B should be one and the same. I think it, I think that we probably would find we really don't want to spend the kind of money it would need for a study and relocation if we could only reduce the clutter as opposed to getting rid of the clutter. That's just, that's a suggestion, incidentally. That's not, that's my, sort of my feeling on mowing. Most of the commercial establishments along the bypass take care of their part, portion of the right of way. Not all, but most. The Park Service does not. But the Park Service, I would say two-thirds of their frontage is very natural anyway. And so you don't really, it's really a rural scape as opposed to an urban scape. And so the fact that the grass is, is high isn't particularly bothersome. And that's also true of other areas along the bypass that are undeveloped. And we have several. Not a lot, but we have several. The areas that are most egregious, I think, are where we have residential neighborhoods abutting the highway. Sometimes there are actually houses on the highway, but more often there are not. There's just the big ditch, the big drainage ditch. And the only way that gets taken care of at all is with the cycle mowing, the state's cycle mowing. I can see an argument that can be made that those ought to be cut by the town on some regular basis. I'm not sure I would like the cost of that. And I, and I could well understand the counterargument that we heard tonight that, hey, you know, that's not something we ought to be doing. That's a state responsibility and we ought to, but, and then, oh, I had another thing popping in my mind. We start cutting these things every other week. Why would the state bother to cut it at all? I mean, if I were Amazon, well, he would want to cut it because he gets paid by the hour, I'm sure. And that was my third, fourth question is, why Amazon? What's wrong with our contractors? We, we must have a dozen guys in this town that cut grass. And if I were them, I would be in here pounding on the, hey, where's the, where's the competition here? But I know we can get prices from Amazon and they're, and they're well experienced at it. And we also know they have the equipment. But it might also be, depending on how, if it turned out that we really did want to cut, we might structure this in such a fashion that the money could stay in town. If you get my point. Those are, those are my comments. I, and I think we ought to get going on D. I think we ought to encourage the Surf Rider Foundation and do everything we can to help that. Signage, promotion, anything we can do. I think that's a wonderful idea and I think we should support that.
Randy, do you have any?
I'll go backwards and I'll agree with you definitely on Surf Rider Foundation. That's a, that's a given. That's a no-brainer. On the grass cutting, I've, I've actually called, had several calls on, on one specific area and actually had to call the town one time, several times on a, on an area that was a, a light, a sign of sight, visual problem where somebody was trying to turn and they weren't able to turn. So it was a, it was a safety issue. And so I, I mean, I, I understand it's a problem, but I'm with you on this. The cost, I'm not sure that we're willing to incur this cost. And the accountant in me goes, if, if we're doing this, what in the world makes me think that the state's going to come do this? If they've, if they've only come, if we're in August and they've only come twice and they're supposed to be here at least five times, my gut tells me if we're doing it, they're not going to. So why are we going to spend local funds with something that they're supposed to be doing? I would, I would much rather say we spend our money and time making them do what they're supposed to be doing? Is that wrong? I don't, I don't know. That said, we, we kind of have to make it safe for those people that are driving on our roads. So sometimes we're having to spend the, the time and the energy to do that. So that's a catch-22 on that one. I, I'm not 100% sure on, on where we need to go with that. I'm just not really sure I want to contract with somebody on that one. On, I kind of agree with Bill on combining the two. I, I can't agree with the study to provide the cost to relocate the lights. That, that to me, that's not my, I know it's a problem to see that, but I, I think if you relocate them, it's like you said, they're going to, somebody's going to say, you got to put something else over there to balance that out. So I, I, I think to put that in there and then figure out what we have to do to get the legislation amended to, to find out what we need to do to set up the special districts.
As far as, and I may call on Steve to help me with response to some of the, the grass discussion. I don't think the concern of DOT not doing, I mean, the minimum that they're already doing, they're, it's part of their pass. So they're not going to skip KDH if we start doing it. I mean, it's just part of their, and I think we've spoken to them about that.
And that was the idea with using Amazon is so that we can coordinate our two-week pass, then they hit their pass so we wouldn't have to do it for four weeks and then we would pay for the subsequent pass. The other issue with Amazon is that they've got all the insurance requirement and all the DOT safety requirements and can coordinate that. If we get a separate contractor trying to coordinate that when their pass gets delayed or whatever, it just seemed like it would be more difficult.
Yeah, I understand.
Now, the one thing that the committee did not discuss, I'm sorry.
One, one thing about state highway, remember what they're supposed to do. Remember that this is a rural highway and that it is cut to rural standards. And the fact that we think it's urban does not make it urban, it is rural.
I worked for DOT, I remember.
Yeah, Pat Mansfield from DOT came and spoke to the committee and explained that that's, that the five passes are what you get for the whole 14 counties in the district or however many counties in the district. That is the standard.
Yep.
Standard, right.
Five passes a year. And we asked, what about other districts? And she said, no, that's generally the standard statewide.
Our standard is the same as the standard up there in the pastures at Currituck.
Right. I mean, we're clumped in that group. I mean, according to DOT.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, they've been talked to about doing it more often and they're just not going to do it. Right.
The one thing the committee did not consider was, I guess, what you would call spot targeting. I don't think we, where you talked about just in front of a particular, I don't know, vacant area or looking through my notes, Bill. But anyway, cutting the, either undeveloped or the areas of residential that are setback that no one's really owning, that's what. I don't think we looked at spot cutting.
Well, there is a map in there and that's based on the cost. The $1,400 was reduced because so much of the business, particularly at the southern half of town, are maintained and they wouldn't have to, to do any activities there. So there was a map that kind of showed areas in green and it eliminated a number of areas.
Yep, I saw that.
Yes, sir.
I also think that targeting brings up another problem. If I were a commercial.
Bingo.
I've been maintaining, paying my own contractor to cut it and suddenly the town starts cutting other taxpayers' property, but not mine.
I'm not going to be doing mine anymore.
I might be inclined to come and speak at public, a public comment and start raising the devil. But we probably would create some problems like that if we tried targeting.
Right. Well, as far as what, does anyone have any more questions for Steve?
No.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. As far as the information to take back to the Community Appearance Commission, I think one of the things that I'm thinking of that I definitely want to take back is to encourage members of that committee to come if we are going to have agenda items on. Because I think that would help if you hear from them in the future when, when we're presenting things. So that's just some, a message that I can carry back to the next meeting because that may help.
may help, just like when we have citizens come and express. You know, I guess it really is kind of one of those things where the, the work that they're trying to navigate, it's one of, you know, it's in the eye of the holder as far as what's, what's unsightly to one or just becomes part of you, just you forget about it because you're driving down the road every day versus they're targeted with a, a task of making recommendations of how to make KDH look better. So...
Absolutely no question about what this would make KDH look a lot better. It really would.
Right. It's just balancing the spending versus, right. Okay, well, I'm, I'm guessing there's not gonna be consensus to do anything with item C tonight. Is that fairly fair?
Do you want to consider targeting?
Isn't it already sort of constructed that way because it's parsoned, they're not doing it?
That's kinda what I was thinking.
Is that right?
It is, with the $1,400, yes, sir.
Right.
Yeah, you're kinda already targeting.
Starting after an area that's, as we've done. Okay. Well, does anyone have any message they want me to share, other than what I've taken notes, so I have information to take back to the committee?
I'd, I'd like to suggest that we consider targeting. And we make the target precise and small and compact.
Steve's gonna come back up.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering, at some point, I'm thinking that Amazon's not gonna be willing to come from, where is it, Steve?
Wherever they are. Wilson.
Winterville.
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 For extremely limited amount of mowing.
Yeah, and my other concern is something Commissioner Pitt said about the ditch and the residential areas. And there were some maps in there to show what they, they mow kind of to the top of the bank of the ditch.
Right.
It does not include mowing the ditch. I mean, that's something that maybe DOT does every three years.
Okay.
So, that's not gonna improve that appearance of that ditch being tall is, is part of what you see as unsightly.
But, but isn't some of that also used for infiltration with the, with the stormwater in some areas?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to make the point that that, that's not gonna be included.
Well, and also there are wetland plants in some of those that can't be, can't be moved.
And do we know if, I mean, I, I know from our discussion about Enterprise that they definitely carry the insurance and basically their experience cutting along the bypass. Do we know if any local companies can do that? I mean, or?
I talked with Ross Cipriano, our Building and Grounds, who's worked with some, and his recommendation is that really the local guys aren't gonna want to put their equipment in that environment. You know, it's so rough, so uneven, there's a lot of areas where it's, it's so sparse, there's so much sand that they would really shy away from that. So, based on the coordination and Amazon already being set up with all the DOT requirements, that's as far as I went.
Would you be willing to put your equipment in that environment?
Generally, our, our folks, we have the equipment, but we operate in the 25 mile an hour residential zones. I would hesitate to put them out in the 50 mile an hour zone with the amount of traffic.
No, I understand. I understand the safety issue, but a safety issue aside, would your equipment handle it?
It, yes.
Okay.
But we could not accomplish the litter pickup. So, that's, that was another thing that the committee talked about is, have you done any good if you just go mow and spread the litter around?
But, but Steve, wouldn't it, wouldn't it shorten the lifespan of our equipment?
Yes, and it's gonna take our staff away from the necessary.
Right. But it would not be good for our equipment.
Okay. Okay. Well, I have enough information. So, I will have a follow-up discussion with the commission, the Community Appearance Commission. Okay. All right. With that, let's move on to the next item is the consent, or excuse me, I'm sorry, the town manager's agenda.
No, ma'am, not this evening.
Okay. Town attorney's agenda?
No, nothing for you tonight.
The consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Three items on the consent agenda. The first is the minutes from the July 8th, 2013 meeting. Second is budget amendments. And for the audience, I'll read a little more of this since they can't see it on the screen. The first budget amendment is to record the tower rental income and associated expenditures and revenues. The second is to record the encumbrances that were outstanding June 30th, 2013. And the third one is the one that the mayor alluded to earlier, and that's the contribution for the purchase of the AEDs and the patrol cars. And that is in the amount of $7,000. And then lastly, and we've had some previous discussion this evening about this item also, it's the financial advisory agreement between the town and DEC Associates, the Carter Group for financial assistance relating to beach nourishment. The proposal that we received is for a sum of $30,000 for private placement of special revenue bonds or 45 if the financing is publicly offered. And we do not have that information at this time. So, that's why we have asked for the $45,000 budget amendment and simply that, those funds would not be used if we were able to do the 30,000. Also have had conversations with the Duck manager, who is also, they're also gonna be using this firm. And even though there's not an actual cost savings in this number, there potentially will be a cost savings in the out-of-pocket with the per diem, because when they come down to work with us, they can work with them also and not have to make the, the trip from Duck. And we have discussed the common expenses for the beach nourishment that they are gonna be sharing, 50%. That was the, is it 60, 66,000 Greg, somewhere?
61,000.
61, 61 something, I can't remember the exact number. So, we will have that cost savings and potentially some additional cost savings in the future. So, that's working out very well. And, and they are, they're interested in a fast track, just as the town is. And with that, mayor, we ask approval of consent agenda as submitted.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to ask or say something here real quick. In case anybody doesn't know what we're talking about, the tower rental is the rising in various companies like that lease space on a water tower and they pay us for that rental space. What's the amount of that, Debbie? Is that?
The budget amendment?
Yeah, how much is that one?
It's, it's $90,568.86.
And that's for what period of time?
I don't know. Do we know exactly how much time that was or is that just an adjustment that she was making, Amy?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll get.
Anyway, we get rental income from that and it's not an insubstantial amount, just for everybody's general knowledge. That's all I got.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this, this evening at the second public comment time? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, then we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here this evening.